Welcome, everybody. Today is November 25, 2019. This is the Select Budget Committee. I'm Sally Bagshaw. I want to say thank you to my colleagues, Councilmember Pacheco, Herbald Gonzalez, Council President Harrell. Thank you. Emily, Councilmember O'Brien, Sawant, and Councilmember Juarez for joining me this morning. This afternoon, we're going to have our good buddy, Councilmember Teresa Moscata, join us at 2:00. But we have some final things to do today. And this is actually our final Select Budget Committee. I know you're all going to miss getting together on a regular basis. So I'm going to move to approve the agenda. And I'm going to move it as in front of you. And then I have a substitute that I would like to add an amendment. So do I have a second for approving?
Second.
Thank you. So now I am going to move to amend the agenda. And this will add CBA CJ 962-C1. And this is about youth diversion for consideration after our second item. And is there a second? Councilmember Sawant?
Second.
Thank you very much. So it's been moved and seconded that we will add an item to our agenda. And are there any further comments? Seeing none, those in favor of this amendment, vote aye and raise your hand. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
So the motion carries. The agenda is amended.
Can I, sorry, Chair Bagshaw, just, first of all, yes, thank you so much. And I'm really delighted that we're cosponsoring this amendment together. And I wanted to, just very briefly, I'll have more expansive points later on for the City Council meeting, but just very quickly, wanted to congratulate the People's Budget Movement and all the community activists who have really pushed for the Restorative Justice Program. And also wanted to let them know that if you are listening to this, you should still come, as planned, for the 2:00 PM meeting because we want to make sure that all the voices are heard regardless of this amendment and that we make that, make your public testimony part of the discourse for the final votes.
Thank you. So now I'm going to move to adopt the agenda as amended. I need a second again. Those in favor of the agenda as amendment, vote aye. Raise your hand. Aye?
Aye.
Very good. None opposed. So the motion carries. The agenda is adopted as amended. So now we're going to move to public comment. Thank you so much for coming. Thank you for being here with us. And I'm going to ask for us to keep our comments to a minute because we've heard from many of you. We have a pretty good idea about the issues. And we'll be ready to move forward. So we've got about 12 speakers here. And I'm going to ask for the Fair Share Coalition, if you will start, Walter Ellis and then Tiffany McCoy in that order. So the Fair Share Coalition, please come on up. And if you've got a lot of you, then we'll give you three minutes, please.
Oh, I was going to ask, Mr. or group, but three minutes, that's plenty.
Great.
Good morning, Councilmembers and Budget Chair. I just want to say thank you from 60 organizations who are part of our coalition for your work on the Fair Share Plan. We are incredibly lucky as a city to have your leadership that recognizes the interconnectedness of housing, workers, and transit as issues that are really tied together. So we thank you for your work, for your many hours of discussion, and we look forward to other pieces of this legislation being implemented in 2020.
Thank you, Patience.
Hey, I'm Charlie with the King County Labor Council. We represent over 150 unions, many of whom have signed on to the Fair Share Plan. And the reason they have is because this plan recognizes so many of what working people in Seattle need today. They need housing. They need that housing near transportation because they need to get to work. And they need good jobs. And this plan really checks all those boxes. It realizes that all these issues are interconnected, that you can't give people good jobs unless you give them a way to get to work. You can't solve our gridlock problems unless you build housing near our transportation hubs. You can't give people housing unless you have the transportation network to get around the city. And so this plan really checks all those boxes. And so I really thank you all for your leadership on making sure that we can get this done.
Hi, my name's Kako. I work at Transportation Choices Coalition. And I just wanted to reiterate what Charlie and Patience were saying about this strong coalition coming together for three essential things that Seattle needs, which is workers' rights, affordable housing near transit, and increased transportation options. As our city continues to grow, people really need more affordable choices, whether that's increased transportation options or the ability to afford a home near transit. And drivers, the people who get us where we need to go and are a critical part of the safe transportation system, deserve security and dignity in their jobs. If we are a city that prioritizes the health and well-being of our people and planet, we need to invest in these interconnected issues. And the Fair Share Plan helps us do this. So thank you, City Council, for your leadership and for making our city more livable. And we look forward to continue working next year to implement the plan and ensure drivers earn the minimum wages after expenses. Thank you.
Hi, and I'm actually Walter Ellis. I was part of the drivers. The other group were going to speak before us. But do the drivers have the time? Thank you. Okay, yeah. The drivers would like to first thank.
Okay. Are you, are you signed up as another?
I'm Walter Ellis, the person who was.
I got it.
I'm second on the list there.
Great. Give Walter a minute, please. Yeah, well.
Well, we had a coalition of drivers that month.
Okay, please, give him three minutes. We're looking forward to hearing what you have to say, Walter.
Thank you. Well, we, the Ride Share Drivers, wanted to thank the City Council and thank the mayor and take a moment to reflect on the progress that we're going to make here together. We're about to implement the first-in-the-nation protections for drivers against the unfair deactivations. And we're establishing protections for the efforts of our hard-working drivers, some of us who are just teetering on the edge at best. And we should note that we did not achieve this in a vacuum. We did this because of all of us together having the insight, wisdom, and courage to make this change. We had the insight to see that we have an unjust and unsustainable status quo that is not working for many of us. We saw that while the tide of prosperity was rising, many of our ships were not going up with it. We had the wisdom to listen to the advocates from many of us whose boats were not rising. We listened to drivers. We listened to housing advocates. We listened to transportation advocates. And we realized that by working together, we can benefit the well-being of all of us together. And we had the courage to take the step that we're taking today and not be intimidated by folks who profit off the backs of people who are not living sustainable futures. And we wanted to thank you for stepping up and taking the lead because as we move forward together, others will follow us. And we will rise the boats of many other people because of the actions that we're doing today. So we all thank you.
Hi, I'm Don Creary. I just realized this will be the last time we speak to this incarnation of the excellent City Council. I want to thank you not just for the Fair Share Plan you're going to vote on today, but for listening to us the last several years. In particular, Councilmember O'Brien, you've been with us in this struggle from the very beginning. We thank you very much, and we are going to miss you.
Again, my name is Peter Quill. I am Dan, and many others have been doing this for the last five years. And I really appreciate my team and on behalf of all of them, we thank you all, Seattle City Council. You are doing a wonderful job. Popular this year will be a hopeful year. And I'm glad everybody will enjoy. Thank you.
Morning, Councilmembers. My name is Nurein. I've been here a few times. And I'm here today to say thank you for listening to us. And we appreciate what you're doing. And this gives us a guarantee of a job. I know with the, I mean, support center, I'm not going to lose a job just for unfair reasons. We appreciate what you're doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Sharon Swat. Thank you so much for supporting. Mike Bryan and everyone of you, thank you so much. Have a good day.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming. I appreciate your words. Tiffany McCoy. Sean Smith. And then we have another group from Othello Village.
Good morning. I'm Tiffany McCoy. I'm the lead organizer with Real Change. And this is Evelyn Chow, our new organizer, who's working with me in my department. We're here to thank you all for funding five mobile pit stops in this year's city budget. Special thank you to Councilmember Herbald and to Councilmember Sawant for being the sponsors of this and for everyone voting unanimously. I'd like to give everyone, everybody Pooh's book. I know Councilmember Gonzalez, you're talking about adding this to your child's collection. If someone would kindly give one to Councilmember Moscata, I would appreciate that as well. But yeah, we're going to take a step forward to addressing the dire circumstance of not having public restrooms outside and also needle disposal and pet waste and also importantly, to decriminalize homelessness because you can get a criminal offense if you are found urinating or going to the restroom outside. So we really appreciate it. We're having a celebration tomorrow at the Real Change Office from 2:00 to 2:30. We're going to have chocolate cake in honor of Pooh. So really, we would like to have everyone come just for 30 minutes to have chocolate cake. It's chocolate. But thank you so much. We really appreciate that a lot. And cheers.
Good. Thank you. And thank you so much for really advocating for this. Tiffany, please let your folks at Real Change know how much we appreciate it. Their advocacy made a big difference. Sean Smith. Then we'll have the Othello Group, then Lyle Anderson. Hey, Sean.
Good morning, Council. My name is Sean Smith. I am a proud resident of Nicholsville Northlake Village. For some of you, this is your final budget. And a budget is reflection of your legacy in the years to come. Presently, Nicholsville Northlake is under threat of closure. We're asking for your help. We've been asking for your help for months. Presently, what we need is $15,000 or a waiver for the first three months of the year at Northlake to waive the City Light utility fee of $5,000 a month. Please, it is useless to close a village in the midst of this crisis. Do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Lyle? We have a group from Othello Village. And then we have Lyle Anderson and Alex Finch. Give them two minutes, please.
Good morning, Seattle City Council. Thank you for being here and supporting us. My name is Lorene Kay. And I would like to touch a little bit on how grateful we are that you guys have come together and worked so hard on this budget. It's imperative. A recent evictee, as myself, was placed on the streets and I had nowhere to turn. I was graciously opened up into loving, warm arms at Othello Village. And they provided an absolutely safe environment for me to be in. As soon as I walked in, I knew that the people there really cared for me. And they even have a great incident reporting system alongside of that. And I believe that with my research in newcomers that it would be great to have a budget for building more new tiny homes. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, community. My name's Lyle Anderson III. And I would just like to say that tiny homes are a great, great addition to any community. The time I spent in my tiny home helped me to look for work, get in touch with the surrounding community, and helped to save my life in a snowy winter. Case management helps to get you to your feet, housing, and numbers of other tasks. I have personally seen the tiny home communities turn individuals from on their way to the grave to being outstanding pillars of the community. And to teach people of responsible activities, teaching people to be on time with onsite security and janitorial training. And to just help the homeless to become successful, stable people again. And I'd also like to say, please give Northgate another chance because all tiny homes really do help the communities in a whole. And thank you.
Thank you, Lyle. So we have Alex Finch, then Bruce, then Peggy Hoots. And I think it is Don Dumas. Hey, Alex.
Okay. My name is Alex Finch. As I've said multiple times this past couple of months, like I said last week, I'm the elected arbitrator now. And I have to say that stress over the past couple of months has caused me to lose sleep a lot. Like last night, I only had two and a half hours, which was interesting because I woke up awake. And speaking of stress, all of my family and friends who live in housing have told me to just give in, let it happen, go with the flow. But you know, if I do that, it's just, the status quo stays the same. Nothing changes. So I choose to fight for my village and keep it open. So we're staying open past December 9. And I invite you all to come on December 9 to see what happens.
Thank you, Alex. Bruce, Peggy, and Don Dumas.
Good morning, Councilmembers. My name is Bruce Gogle, and I'm a Nickelodeon. Several days ago, Deputy Mayor Mosley met with Pastor Jamie Fetcher of Gift of Grace Lutheran Church to discuss Nicholsville Northlake. He brought along the one and only Jason Johnson. Apparently, there are three reasons why they think Northlake should not continue. Number one, Lehigh needs the houses at Othello Village. Just leaving that nightmare recently, I know for a fact that, excuse you, I'm sorry. I know for a fact that that can't happen. They would have to literally stack the houses on top of each other in order to put more houses in at Othello. What they should do is take the four houses that Nicholsville owned at Othello, move them over to Northlake. That's what they should do. I have 35 years construction experience. I can build the rest of the tiny houses that we need for Northlake. Number two reason that they said that they should close is because, my thing totally crashed on me, is because the budget doesn't jive. The budget for self-management doesn't jive with the Lehigh budget. Well, of course, it won't. That's what happens when you have a monopoly, you know, do something like this, is there's no accountability and inflated expenses. So the reason they said that they can't, Northlake shouldn't continue, is that our budget wouldn't work.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thanks.
Peggy, and then Don Dumas, and then Eliana.
Good morning, City Council. Thanks for all your hard work on the budget. My name is Peggy Hoots. At last week's Nicholsville Northlake meeting, the residents democratically affirmed that the village will not be closing on December 9. It was agreed that keeping Northlake open was important for all of Seattle. Sweeping successful shelter in the dead of winter is not the action of a city working to end homelessness. Please help get city money to pay the City Light $5,000 a month for using the land Northlake's on or just waive the rental costs. Please add a proviso to keep HSD from using money next year, 2020, to close Northlake. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Don? Do we have a Don Dumas here? And then Eliana and Ed Mast is our last speaker.
Thank you, Councilmember Bagshaw. It's Doug.
Oh, thank you.
My brother is Don. He was also in the motion picture industry.
Thank you.
But he's retired.
I will write down Doug.
Okay. Hi, my name is Doug Dumas. I am a member of Teamsters Local 174, the motion picture theatrical trades division. I would like to thank you all for all the hard work you've done this year on this budget. I know that there are a lot of hard decisions that you've had to make, and I hope that you were able to make the right ones. I would like to say that this is all we have ever been about. We've never asked for money. We've not asked for new programs. All we've ever asked for is a seat at the table. And thank you, Councilmembers Sawant and Herbald, for championing this issue for us and helping us get some voice in an administration that seems to be tone deaf to what we're trying to say and what we're asking for. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Doug. Eliana, then Ed Mast.
Hello, I'm Eliana Scottdonas. I've got four brief asks, all about really listening to the voices of community. The communities most harmfully impacted by our criminal justice system have asked you to fund a clear plan of vitally needed programs. Please fully meet the needs identified in the manner requested. You've heard moving testimony about the life-changing impacts of the tiny house village model with its offer of privacy, dignity, and community, and about the desperate need for a significant expansion. The proposed increase falls far short but will be a lifeline for many. Please realize that enhanced shelters cannot substitute for this. Northlake Village residents have come here repeatedly to plead for your support and your solidarity with them as they're threatened with eviction. Please take meaningful action to show them your support and help ensure that they're not being evicted here in the middle of December. And failing that, please join us on December 9. And finally, you're going to be tired of hearing me say this. It's time to stop asking the mayor for theories of change about the navigation team and for you to work with impacted communities to design your own theory of change and a model that embodies it. Thank you.
Thank you, Eliana. Ed Mast is our last speaker.
Ed Mast, homeowner in Coast Salies Territory, known as Wallingford. I'm a neighbor of Northlake Tiny House Village. I'm here again to beg you to take steps to avoid it being swept. I would like it to continue in my neighborhood. If you allow the Lehigh sweep to be carried out, you're going to have to arrest some folks, including very likely some housed neighbors. I personally have a stake in avoiding that outcome. I beg you to take the viable option with Gift of Grace Church religious sponsorship and a tiny budget amendment to affect that happening. I remind you that it's not just about the tiny houses. It's about the community that is formed under the Nicholsville model, people exercising the skills of taking care of each other toward recovery, toward health, toward reentering housing that is not replaced by finding them other places to sleep. Even that extra three months to the end of March, to the end of the original permit as budgeted, will give a greater chance for that community to make a collective decision together to move to a next step. Please help that happen.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Ed. Okay, that brings us to the end of our public comment here. We've got five items of business. And I'd like to move forward with item number one. And Ellie, at least, do either one of you want to read this in?
Good morning, Councilmembers. Ellie Pinucci, Council Central Staff. Item number one on the agenda is HSD 99-C3. This action would rescind CBA HSD 99-C2 and replace it with this CBA HSD 99-C3. This budget action adds $3.5 million of general fund in 2020 to HSD to contract with the Law Enforcement Assistant Diversion Program and adds an assistant city prosecutor and imposes three provisos. The difference between this action and the action that was acted on at last week's Budget Committee meeting is that it changes the position type for the law department from city attorney to city prosecutor, that is a technical correction, and modifies the proviso slightly to include a halftime paralegal position that is dedicated to working on lead.
Thank you, Ellie. I moved to rescind CBA HSD 99-C-2 and approved CBA HSD 99-C-3. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Anything else that you would like?
No, I jumped ahead there. Thanks.
Okay. But that was great. Any other comments on this? So seeing none, those in favor of the motion, vote aye and raise your hand. Aye? Any opposed? Did you get the count? Do you need a count? Okay. The motion carries. And CBA HSD 99-C-2 is rescinded. And CBA HSD 99-C-3 is approved. Well done. Item one, check. Item two.
Item two is HOM 2D1. This action would rescind HOM 2C1 and replace it with HOM 2D1. This adds $815,000, including $142,000 of general fund and one-time funds to HSD to open a tiny home village and impose a proviso.
Very good. I'll move. And is there a second to rescind CBA HOM 2-C1 and approve CBA HOM 2-D1?
I'll second it if you've moved it, yes.
Thank you. It's moved and seconded. So do you want to move, give us any further comments?
Sure. So the difference between this action and the action that was taken at the last committee meeting is it adds language to the proviso. It continues to say, to reserve this money only to establish and operate a new tiny home village or enhanced shelter, and prioritizes accommodating referrals from the navigation team, Law Enforcement Assistant Diversion Program, and Seattle Municipal Court. It adds, as long as the referral is appropriate for that program model, it may be spent for no other purpose. And that is just to clarify and make certain that referrals are appropriate. So for example, if it's a sober tiny home village and the person who's being referred is not sober, that wouldn't be appropriate for that program. So it's really just clarifying intent.
Very good. Councilmember O'Brien, do you have anything else you'd like to speak to on this?
Yeah, I think, thanks for your work on this. We had a good discussion last week on this. And I think there was a couple sentences that weren't clear on. So I believe that we've reached agreement. Councilmember Moscata's office has worked with advocates, including Skitch. And my understanding is that there's consensus that this language should meet the need.
Great. And I certainly support this, appreciate all the work that's gone forward. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, those in favor of the motion, vote aye and raise your hand. Aye?
Aye.
I don't see anybody in opposition, so the motion carries, and CBA HOM 2-C-1 is rescinded, and CBA HOM 2-D-1 is approved. Excellent. So we're moving on to the next item, which is the amendment that Councilmember Sawant and I are bringing forward. And do I have to move to suspend at this point? So I'd like to move to suspend the council rule relating to reconsideration of amendments that do not pass at the committee meeting, and that was at our last committee meeting. It did not pass. So is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor of the rule being suspended, vote aye and raise your hand. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, seeing none. The motion is going to carry, and the rule is suspended. So I will now move to approve CBA CJ 962-C-1. Councilmember Sawant, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Central Staff, would you please walk us through now what is the action before us?
Sure. So CJ 962C1 would add $222,600 to HSD for a youth diversion and education program, and this cuts the $222,600 from SPD's budget for overtime or from other program areas determined by the department.
Very good. And I want to say thank you to my colleagues. Councilmember Harrell, I know this is an issue near and dear to your heart as well. Councilmember Sawant, do you have any comments that you'd like to make at this point?
No, I'll make some comments later.
Okay, very good. Any further comments? Okay, seeing none, those in favor of the motion, vote aye and raise your hand. Aye? I'm not seeing any, so the motion carries unanimously, and CBA CJ 962-C-1 is approved. And for those of you who are watching the sausage being made, what happens here is that we'll have an additional $500-plus thousand that will be going into youth diversion and education, and that's in addition to the $1 million that Councilmember Herbold had proposed last year. And there will be the RFP process going forward in January. Councilmember Herbold?
I just, for the record, that was, last year's budget action was sponsored by Councilmember O'Brien. I was a co-sponsor of it, that is true, but it was Councilmember O'Brien's, he was the champion for that $1.01 million for 2020. I don't want to lose track of the additional $300,000 that you Budget Chair put into your first version of the balanced budget, also for this purpose.
Yes, thank you.
So I think we're rolling up to almost $1.5.
Yeah, a little bit more. So Councilmember O'Brien, I didn't mean to slight you on that. Thank you for your hard work, both of you.
No slight felted. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, good. So the motion carries, CBA CJ 962-C-1 is approved, and we can move on to item number four.
Item number four is BLG 6A1. This files Clerk File 314438, City Council changes to the 2020 proposed budget and the 2020 to 2025 proposed capital improvement program.
Very good. So I'll move to approve this, CBA BLG 6-A1, which would approve and file Clerk File 314438. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? Seeing no comments, CBA BLG 6A1 has been moved and seconded. Those in favor of the motion, vote aye and raise your hand. Aye?
Aye.
I don't see any opposed. The motion carries, and CBA BLG 6A1 is approved. Very good. So number five is the big one, where we actually adopt this budget. Would you like to proceed, Ellie?
Sure. Item five, BLG 5A1, amend and pass as amended Council Bill 119689, the 2020 budget ordinance.
Good. And do we need to go back with, for CJ 962-C-1, or are we good?
We're good because, Chair Bagshaw, because of the amendment to, that, because of this committee's action to adopt CJ 962C1 and to correct a technical error, you have a substitute version of this item before you. So that is, that was just to note that this is why you have a substitute.
Oh, okay, very good. So our last item, which you just mentioned, CBA BLG 5A1, which would amend and pass as amended our Council Bill 119689, will adopt our 2020 budget, including the appropriations, the provisos, the revenue estimates, the position modifications, and the 2020 to 2025 capital improvement program. So tell me about amendments now. Can I just move forward with this?
Yeah, Chair Bagshaw, I think what you want to first do is move the item that is on the agenda, BLG 5A1, and ask for a second, and then move to, following that, you'll move the substitute, and the substitute version reflects the changes to appropriations that were just made in CJ 96, 962C1. So it adopts a revised Attachment A and Attachment B.
Thanks, Lisa.
To be fair, there are three steps, actually. So you'll move the underlying legislation, you'll have a motion to substitute. If the motion to substitute passes, then you vote on the item that was substituted.
Very good. All right, we'll see how we do. So I move to approve CBA BLG 5A1, which would adopt and amend Council Bill 119689. Is there a second? Okay. Any further comments on this? Councilmembers, one?
Thank you, Chair Bagshaw, and I want to do this right, so we, and I don't want to be confused on the substitute, but just for the interests of the public and the People's Budget Movement, people who are watching this, the previous item that we voted on, CBA BLG 6A1, was approved the clerk file containing the budget amendments passed by the council during the budget discussions of the council to the mayor's proposed budget. And I voted yes on that because I 100% support all the improvements to the budget. But this item, which is CBA BLG 5A1, and then whether it's a substitute or not, that's a different question. I don't want, I didn't want my points to be subsumed in the substitute question. I just wanted to say that, as I have mentioned when voting on the budget in all the previous years, I have supported all the progressive changes to the city budget, to the mayor's proposed budget, that we as a council do. But the changes, unfortunately, every year, including this year, are on the margins of the budget and do not actually have the kind of impact that the city council needs to have in proportion with the social problems that the majority of the people in this city face. The bulk of the city budget, unfortunately, is still designed to support the status quo and not meet the human need as we see it, and it still fails to end or even substantively address the homelessness and housing crisis for workers in a city that has now become profitable to one of the most, some of the most, some of the biggest multinational corporations in the world. And so I will be voting no on the budget as a whole, but I just wanted to clarify, as I always do every year for the budget, that I have voted yes on all the progressive amendments that we as a council made to the budget. So in terms of the procedure, please let me know how I can vote no on the final budget, but I don't want to vote no on the procedural question of substitution.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. So any further comments on this? We're going to move to substitute now. I move to substitute the CBA BLG 5B1 for this item. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so now it's been moved and seconded to substitute CBA BLG 5B1 as presented. Are there any further comments?
Chair Bagshaw?
Please.
I just want to address Councilmember Sawant's question so that this next vote is the procedural vote on the motion to just substitute. So you could vote no on this. You would not be voting, or you could vote no or yes. This is not a vote on the entire budget. It's just substituting the CBA, and then the next vote is actually the vote to make the recommendation on the ordinance itself.
Good. Thank you for clarifying that. So those in favor of the motion to substitute, vote aye and raise your hand. Aye? Good. Are there any no? Okay, thank you. I couldn't see Councilmember Sawant's hand. All right, the motion carries, and CBA BLG 5B1 is now before us. Are there any further comments? Seeing none, those in favor of the committee recommending approval of this item, vote aye and raise your hand. Aye? Any opposed?
No.
So the motion carries, and CBA BLG 5B1 is approved. Okay, anything else for the good of the order today?
You will have a motion to, you have the two motions to suspend council rules before you.
Okay. So since it was not unanimous, I move to suspend council rule relating to reconsideration of amendments that do not pass the committee meeting.
Sorry, Chair Bagshaw, the motion to suspend will be non-unanimous legislation going to the City Council today.
Okay, so we're just forwarding the legislation to City Council even though it was a seven to one vote?
It's non-unanimous.
Right.
Yes.
So I think that's where I was going. So... Yeah. No, thank you for that. I was starting to think that I had skipped a step here. But those in favor of the rule being suspended, and this will allow what we just did to move forward to our 2:00 meeting, and I've moved that. Is there a second? Just to make sure. Okay, those in favor of the rule being suspended, vote aye and raise your hand. Aye?
Aye.
Is there opposition? Okay, no, I, so the, so the motion carries unanimously, and the rule is now suspended. So with council president's concurrence, and if there's no objection, the council rules will be suspended to allow this item to be forwarded to today's 2:00 p.m. City Council meeting. And it did not have unanimous support, but it was seven to one vote. So hearing no objection, the council rule is suspended. The legislation will be forwarded to today's 2:00 p.m. City Council meeting. And then I think we just need to go through the next approval. So again, with the council president's approval, again, this is you, and if there's no objection, the council rules will be suspended to allow legislation acted on today's meeting to be forwarded to today's 2:00 p.m. City Council meeting. And hearing no objection, the council rule is suspended, and the legislation will be forwarded to today's 2:00 p.m. City Council meeting. So any other comments? Okay, seeing none, this concludes our Budget Committee meeting today at 2:00 p.m. City Council will meet to consider the adoption of what we just did, the Budget Committee's recommendations for final action. We're still accepting written comments if anybody has something new that they want to add. And of course, the budget will be available, copies of the proposed budget, meeting schedules and agenda, those are on our City Council website. I want to thank all of you once again for all of your help. Council Central Staff, for all the work this morning. There was a lot of juggling between 7:30 a.m., and now thank you so much for that. So the Budget Committee will now be adjourned for the day.